January of 2010, people were leaving from every corner of our state to go to places like Pennsylvania and Virginia, North Carolina and Florida. Our state had reached a point of real desperation. We needed to do some radical things differently, dug out of the hole. Now we have to move the state and its people forward. Because I believe that if we give you some economic relief, help support your families, to put food on the table, if we can make our education system better for everyone, if we can change our criminal justice system, then we're going towards a place we can be proud of. Sometimes you may look at me and think I'm spoiling for a fight. Not all the time, but I tell you this, I'm gonna fight for the things that are worth fighting for. My mother used to tell me all the time, Christopher, be yourself. Because if you are, then you're not gonna have to worry tomorrow about remembering who you pretended to be yesterday. So ladies and gentlemen, this is it. What you see is what you get.
Ladies and gentlemen, Governor Chris Christie.
Well, good morning. Thank you so much for having me here today. And I will tell you, the good, good news I got already from Mayor Mulla this morning. I didn't know this before I arrived here this morning, but you know that if anyone would know this, Mayor Mulla would know it. He said, "This is the first time that a city governor has ever been to Elmwood Park or the Old East Patterson. That is much too long." And so I'm glad I'm here this morning. And Dick, I will give a talking to to my predecessors for having skipped this. So we'll make sure that we let them know they missed something coming to Elmwood Park. Thank you all for coming this morning, for being here. We have a lot of important things to talk about. And you know, it's crazy time in our state and in our country always when it's election time. Now, the election is seven weeks from today. And so lots of people use that as an excuse. They use it as an excuse to do nothing. As they say, "Well, you know, we have an election." Well, in New Jersey, we have an election every year. And so, you know, if we use that as an excuse, we never get anything done. So we need to talk about the things that we need to get done when the legislature finally gets back from their summer vacation. Now, I know all of you thought summer was over quite some time ago. But the summer's not over for the legislature. It's so great. I mean, they have such a great job. I mean, you think about it, these folks, they left at the end of June, and we have barely seen hide nor hair of them since then. Now, take my word for it, I'm not complaining too much about that. Because when they come into town, they cause a ruckus and it's just so negative that it's good not to have them in the building. But I will tell you that it's time for them to get back to work. And you know, because you know what's gonna happen? They're using this election as an excuse now not to do anything. And then the day after this election, they're gonna say, "Well, we don't have to do anything because we got another election next November." And so they just continue to play this out. Because you know, unfortunately for so many of these folks in the majority in the legislature, you know, they, they want an excuse not to do anything. But here are things that we're gonna talk about today that make up our middle-class reform agenda that need to get done. They're the final pieces of the things that we promised, that we promised back in 2009. Things that we know need to get done. And I gotta go through them with you. First, of course, is that it's time to cut taxes in New Jersey. And these folks just don't wanna hear that. But here's the interesting way it played out. Because you gotta go through the whole story to really understand it, right? So in January, I give the State of the State address, and I say that we should cut income taxes by 10% for everybody in New Jersey. Now, what's the initial reaction from the Democrats? The initial reaction is, "Well, we're gonna cut taxes. We're gonna cut taxes too, we're gonna come up with a different plan. And we're gonna cut taxes, we don't like the governor's plan, but we're gonna come up with a plan because we need to cut taxes too. We agree with the governor, we should cut taxes, we just don't agree with the way he wants to do it." Okay, so then Senator Sweeney came out with a plan to cut taxes. And then the Assembly came out with their plan. Now, of course, the Assembly is an interesting group of folks. Because their plan was, they said, "Well, to cut taxes, we have to raise taxes first." This, this is, should be no shock to you. This is how you got 115 tax and fee increases in the eight years before I became governor. She said, "Well, we'll raise taxes and then we'll cut taxes." Which is a fascinating idea. So we ignored them right from the beginning. Because you know, that kinda idea is just not gonna fly here. I vetoed three income tax increases from the legislature. And if they send me three more in the next three weeks, I'll veto another three. We're not raising taxes in New Jersey on my watch. So Senator Sweeney and I argued kinda back and forth between, you know, about February and May. I liked my plan better, he liked his plan better. I made my argument, he made his argument. And then I just finally said to myself, "Well, you know what? He wants to cut taxes, I wanna cut taxes. Do I really care whether it's my tax cut or his tax cut?" As I said, "Well, the heck with it." And in the spirit of compromise that has really marked our relationship throughout the three years now almost I've been governor, I went to Senator Sweeney and I said, "Okay. Make one or two little changes and I'll agree to your tax cut." He said, "Really?" And I said, "Yes, I'll agree to your tax cut." He goes, "That's great." So then, we went through the little changes we had to make, we agreed to the little changes that we would make. And I said, "Okay, Steve, I'm ready, let's go. Let's you and I go out together and cut taxes." And he went, "Uh, what? Huh? You mean you really are serious, you're gonna do mine?" And I said, "Yes." Well, guess what happened then? When, forget mine, I put mine aside. When I went to them and said, "I'll take your tax cut." Because some tax cut is better than no tax cut for the people of this state. You know what they did then? They said, "Oh, wait a second, we can't do it yet." So wait a second, you've been arguing since February for this tax cut. I'm telling you, right now, I'll sign it. They said, "Oh, no, no, we can't do it yet because we don't have enough money to cut your taxes." Now, this is also a fascinating argument, isn't it? The money comes from you in the first place. So for us to say, "We don't have enough money to let you keep more of your money," means just one thing. It means that we believe we can spend your money better than you can. And so, it's not like they're saying, "Listen, Governor, we're not gonna cut taxes. And we're gonna take all that money and we're gonna put it in a rainy day fund to sit aside here." No, 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 believe me, everybody. They're spending every nickel of it. In fact, I had to cut line item veto 365 million dollars of additional spending they put in the budget. So now you hear them all complaining now, "Oh, we may not have enough money. We not have enough money." You may not have enough money, then what were you doing spending the extra 365 million that I line item vetoed out? If I had signed their budget the way they sent it to me, we'd have a 365 million dollar problem on our hands in addition to whatever they're trying to cook up now. And don't forget last year either, by the way. When these guys, when these Democrats lecture you about spending. Remember, I line item vetoed out over 900 million in spending in the budget that just ended. So think about this for a second. They're saying, "Trust us when we tell you we don't have enough money to cut your taxes." Yet these are the same people that I've had to line item veto nearly 1.3 billion dollars in additional spending that they voted for. So here's what you need to know about these guys. They have 1.3 billion dollars of your money that they're willing to spend on their pet programs, but they don't have 250 million dollars to cut your taxes in 2013. The argument makes no sense, and the press just goes right along with it. Right along with it. It doesn't make any sense. The same people who wanted to spend 1.3 billion more that only didn't get spent because I cut it, I line item vetoed out, line by line, out of the budget. Those same people now say, "But, but we don't have enough money to spend 250 million on a tax cut." This is what this means, everybody. They'll never give you a tax cut. They're never gonna cut your taxes. And it's not only what they're doing with me. It's what they did for the eight years before I got here, when they were completely in charge. Raised taxes and fees 115 times in eight years, when there was no governor to control them. When there was a governor that was complicit. Jim McGreevy, Dick Cody, John Corzine, all tax raisers. I mean, for God's sake, Dick Cody is the only guy in the legislature who not only has voted for every income tax increase, he voted to establish the income tax. So you know you've been around a little too long. I mean, so these folks, you expect these folks to ever cut your taxes willingly? They're never gonna do it unless we force them to. And when I travel around the state, I hear from folks all the time about how they're overburdened by taxes in this state. And I'm saying to them, "Good, we made some tough decisions the last two and a half years. Now we give you some of your money back." And you've got these folks saying, "Well, wait till January." Now, I don't know if any of you used to watch the Popeye cartoons when you were kids like I did. And remember Wimpy from the Popeye cartoons? Wimpy would always say, "I'd be happy to pay you tomorrow for a hamburger today." Right? That's what the Democrats are like. "Don't, don't worry. I'd be happy to spend your money today and I'll give you a tax cut tomorrow." Well, the spending happens and the tax cutting never comes. Never comes. And so, this is the fight worth fighting because if we don't make New Jersey more affordable, it's not just about putting more money in your pocket because it's the right thing to do, and it is. But we wanna be competitive in this region with a top tax rate of nearly 9% on income in this state. And you go across the border to Pennsylvania, you know what the top rate is? 3.07 compared to 9% top rate here. Three times higher. How are we gonna be competitive to create more jobs, to keep people here, if we're gonna continue to conduct ourselves in that way? We can't. So that's why item number one on the middle-class reform agenda is to get this tax cut done. And the worst part of this is, they agreed to it. They agreed to it and then they reneged because they never thought I'd compromise. They didn't think I'd say yes. This is the beauty of being governor. They never know what you're gonna do. And they're out there, "Yap, yap, 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 yap." Governor won't agree, the governor, the governor's a bully, the governor won't agree, the governor won't compromise. "Okay, I'll compromise." "Uh, uh, we don't have the money." I mean, it's a joke. It's a joke. And they're making themselves a joke now in the, in the eyes of the public. Because the one thing that the public in New Jersey especially can pick out faster than anything are phonies. That's what you can pick out faster than anything. And you know, this tax cut will be significant. The average family in New Jersey will get an additional 775 dollars, sum up to 1,000 dollars. And for folks who are amongst the working poor, folks who are working really hard but aren't making enough money to even pay state income taxes yet, to give those people a hand up, it'll be an average of 550 dollars for those working families. That's gonna make a huge difference to them in their ability to take care of their kids, keep a roof over their heads, to keep food on the table. This is a significant amount of money to everyday New Jerseyans. And instead, they wanna keep that money to spend on every one of the programs that they've established and developed over the last eight years before I got here. Enough with the spending already. Enough with making government bigger. We need to make government smaller. And they are trying to prevent me, after I've made government smaller, from taking some of that savings and giving it back to you. So that's agenda item number one. We gotta do that for each other and to make sure, to make sure that we continue to grow jobs in this state and get people back to work. And last thing, they'll say something about this being for the rich. Well, nobody over, who makes a family income or a business who makes income over 400,000 dollars will get a tax cut. Only people 400,000 and down. So don't let them start talking about millionaires again. Because millionaires aren't getting any break. In fact, even by the New Jersey definition of a millionaire, which by the way, as you know, the Democrats established that you are a millionaire in New Jersey when you make more than 400,000 dollars. Now, this is of course special New Jersey math. Done only by legislative Democrats. 400,000 dollars is our millionaire's tax. How do you deal with that when you're governor, when you go around other states trying to recruit businesses? This is basically what I say. Because it's bad, right? I mean, it's not a good thing. But I try to make fun of it. I say, "Listen, if you are not a millionaire, but you wanna feel like one, come to New Jersey." Even... Even if you, like, only 400,000 dollars a year, we'll tax you like a millionaire. And then you could tell all your friends, "Hey, you know, I pay the millionaire's tax." "That's right, I pay the millionaire's tax." "Do you, do you make a million dollars?" "No, no, no, but here in New Jersey, I pay the millionaire's tax." I mean, even for those folks who even by the Democrats' definition of millionaire aren't millionaires, those people make under 400,000 dollars a year, they don't wanna give them a tax cut either. So we need to get moving on this really quickly. Second, how about, this is a really tough issue for, for Democrats in New Jersey. How about ethics reform? All right? Now, so I'll let you know that I proposed ethics reform, comprehensive ethics reform, 742 days ago. 742 days ago. And at the time, Senator Sweeney said, "We are gonna give the governor's package a thorough review and hearing because there's lots of good ideas in there." 742 days later, it has not gotten one hearing in the state legislature. Not one. These are controversial things like full financial disclosure by state legislators. Like, one public job is enough for anybody. All right? Like ending dual office holding in New Jersey. I mean, over in, we're relatively close to Hudson County where we're sitting today. I mean, you got a guy who's got three public jobs in Hudson County. He's a state senator, gets paid for that. He's a mayor, gets paid for that. And he's like the assistant superintendent of schools, and he gets paid for that. Wonder what his salary is every year on, on your money? 309,000 dollars a year. Not a millionaire, but close. Close. 309,000 dollars a year for Senator Nick Sacco. Senator Sacco, Mayor Sacco, Assistant Superintendent Sacco. His business card must be this big. Fit all those titles on there. A huge business card. I say, "Listen, end dual office holding, one office at a time." You know, we should end this. I mean, these are the controversial things that I've included in my ethics package. And in 742 days, hasn't gotten a hearing. How about this one? Sick leave payouts. Now, you all know what this is about, right? This is, this is another controversial proposal by me. I say that people shouldn't be paid for not being sick. I think that not being sick is the benefit of not being sick. All right? Now, this is the way this one's worked. Right now, the accumulated sick leave payout liability for all the municipalities statewide as we sit here right now, the liability they have in the books is 880 million dollars. 880 million dollars for the municipalities just to pay out the sick leave. In Parsippany, in my home county of Morris County, four police officers retired. They collected amongst the four of them over 900,000 dollars in sick leave. The town did not have the money. They had to bond. They had to borrow to pay out the sick leave payout for those four police officers. I mean, you know, my view on this is this, if we're gonna actually continue to do this, we should do it like a wedding. All right? We should have a retirement party for the public official. We should have it down at Town Hall or City Hall. And they should stand like, you know, like come up to a place like this, right? And you queue you all up. And the town will tell you, "Your check needs to be made out for X amount." And then you walk through the line and you hand the guy the check and say, "Thank you for your service." And then he could say, "Thank you for the check." And at least you'd get a thank you out of it. Right now, you don't even get a thank you out of it, right? So... It's just like a wedding. We could have a guy standing next to him, holding all the envelopes, you know? And then he can go back in the back later and count all the money. They could get all excited. Because you know what these guys call these checks? Not us, what they call them. Boat checks. They call them boat checks because it's what they use to buy their boat after they retire. Because they're big enough to do that. So here's what I proposed. I proposed zero means zero. That from this day forward, whenever we pass this law, you can accumulate as much sick leave as you want and use it if you're sick. And I've even said and donated to a coworker who has a terminal illness or a chronic illness. Because that's what the sick leave's meant for. We should be able to do that. But no more cash for the sick days. Now, the legislature came back and sent me a bill. Ready? They said, "Okay, Governor, we like your plan, except we want everybody to get another 15,000 dollars above what they have now." Now, I don't know where they came up with that number. Say 15,000 dollars. So I vetoed that and sent it back to them. I said, "Zero means zero." Then they came back and gave me another bill. Said, "How about 7,500?" I felt like I'm dealing with Monty Hall, you know? Only the older people like me will understand. I see these kids going, "Monty Hall? Who the heck is Monty Hall?" Later, you're gonna go to the computer and Google Monty Hall. And they'll explain it to you on Google, okay? Monty Hall has a Wikipedia page. You can go on there and they'll tell you everything you need to know about Monty Hall, okay? So then, and you'll laugh later. It'll be a funny joke later, but right now, you don't get it. So they give me the 7,500 dollar bill and I go, "Well, wait a second." So I said to my staff, "Could you tell me, if I sign this bill, what's the additional cost to municipalities, counties, and the state if I sign the 7,500 dollar bill?" Well, they came back to me and said, "If you sign this, Governor, you're adding to that 880 million another 3.25 billion." 3.25 billion. Even here in New Jersey, we're starting to talk about real money. 3.25 billion. So I vetoed that too and sent it back to them. Said, "Zero means zero." Listen, we can't take away the people's sick time that they're supposed to get paid for that have already counting on it. It's against the law and I wouldn't suggest we do it. But we should have a rule going forward that sick leave is for when you're sick. It is not a second taxpayer-funded retirement plan on top of the taxpayer-funded pension we're already giving you. So that's another one of my controversial proposals in the middle-class reform agenda. The next, you remember we passed the property tax cap about two years ago at 2%? Starting to work. Last year, property taxes went up 2.4% statewide. The lowest they've gone up in over 20 years in the state. So it's starting to work. I got an email from a woman in Hawthorne, right near here, who sent me an email and said, "Governor, I just got my property tax bill and it went up 8.96 cents." She said, "This is the best day I've had in years." She said, "I thought I was gonna have to move out of New Jersey when I got this bill. Now I can stay." So the cap's starting to work, but, and no offense, because I know Mayor Mulla would never do anything like this. But there are some ingenious mayors around New Jersey who are saying, "We don't like the property tax cap." So what we're gonna do is we're gonna charge user fees. User fees for garbage, user fees for this, user fees for that, all to try to get around the cap. So Senator Sweeney and I have agreed on a bill to say, "You wanna charge fees? Go ahead, but they gotta fit under the cap." You can call it whatever you wanna call it. But no more than 2% increase to the taxpayers per year all in. Now, it makes sense. And all these folks who voted for the cap, all these folks who voted for the cap, they should vote for this, right? Because they meant to cap it. Now, all of a sudden, because, especially in the Assembly, Senate's ready to pass this. In the Assembly, a bunch of mayors are coming and complaining. "It's too hard. It's too hard for us to control spending. It's too hard." And you got those League of Municipality guys down there, that Whiner, Bill Dressel, you know, down there. "Oh, come on, it's too hard. Let us raise more money from the people of this state." Don't they understand that you're, you know, you're stretched? You're stretched already. Let them start making some sacrifices. Let them start making some hard decisions. You elect people to make hard decisions and most of the time, you're disappointed. Well, guess what? Now, we gotta start forcing the hard decisions on them. So we need the Assembly to pass this bill and close the loopholes in the property tax cap so we can continue the progress we're making downward on property taxes in New Jersey. Because this train was going 100 miles an hour when I got here. Up 70% in the 10 years before I became governor. Now up 2.4% last year. We're slowing the train down. And believe me, once we slow the train down, then we'll start pushing it backwards. But if we don't do stuff like this, it's not gonna happen. So any of you here, you don't have to worry about Elmwood Park because Mulla's fine. He's, he's taking care of business. But you live in any other towns around here, get on the phone with your mayor and say, "Are you in favor of closing the loopholes on the property tax cap?" See your mayor at the bakery, at the dry cleaners, on the soccer field. Grab him or her aside and say, "What's your position on this?" You should know before you vote in November, especially if your mayor's up, they should have to tell you what's their position on this. Because this is gonna help to keep property taxes controlled. Same thing on shared services. We have too many, too much duplication of service across school districts and across municipalities in this state. And it's costing us a fortune, absolute fortune. And we tried to do things like to offer carrots to people to get them to do it differently. "Oh, if you share services, we'll give you this, we'll give you that." Hasn't worked. We have not yet been able to find a way to offer someone enough to make them do this. So Senator Sweeney and I have gotten together again on this and we agree. Now, we're gonna have to do it differently. So here's the way we're gonna do it. I know you're gonna be shocked to hear that Senator Sweeney and I are gonna get tough on something. Because I know that's not our reputation. But here we go. If we study your town and we see we can, you can save money from sharing services and you refuse to do it, what this bill says is, "That's fine. You don't have to do it, but we're reducing your state aid by that amount." We're reducing your state aid by that amount. Because in your town, you could decide if you want. You decide if you want to have one of everything. And if that makes you feel better, that's fine. But guess what? The folks in Haddonfield shouldn't have to pay for it. The folks in New Brunswick shouldn't have to pay for it. The folks in Maristown shouldn't have to pay for it. The folks in Hackensack shouldn't have to pay for it. You pay for it. You want one of everything, you pay for it. That's fine. But then don't come to me and complain about property taxes in your town. Because you're making the decision then. You're deciding what to do. And we need to get people to start sharing services. Now, I'll give you a perfect example because everybody usually, the way this works is, everybody says, "Darn right, Governor, absolutely, they should be sharing services." You know, those, those son of a guns up in Saddle River, in Upper Saddle River, they should be sharing. I'm sorry, Sam, but you're the chairman. And if I pick on you, everyone's gonna know I'm being fair. Those son of a guns in Saddle River, Upper Saddle River, there's all kinds of waste going on up there. They should fix it. Down here in Elmwood Park, everything's fine. Don't mess with us. But up there, all kinds of crap going on. So I'll use my own hometown as an example. I live in Mendham Township. 5,000 people in Mendham Township, shaped like a horseshoe. Inside the horseshoe is Mendham Borough, another 5,000 people. Let's start with how crazy that is to begin with. That we're gonna have Mendham Township and Mendham Borough. The, you know, the, the little piece inside the, inside the horseshoe has to have a different name. But not only a different name, we both have our own police departments with our own police chiefs. And you know what? I live in Mendham Township, except the police station for Mendham Borough closer to my town than the one for Mendham Township. So if I got a problem up in my house and I call the police and I call the one that's closest, Mendham Borough, they go, "Oh, sorry, you'll have to call Mendham Township." "Well, yeah, but they're three miles further away." "Whoa, sorry. Hope everything goes okay up there. Thanks, have a nice day." We have two public libraries. Now, come on. Do we really need two public libraries? Do the books read differently if you take them out of the Mendham Borough library than out of the Mendham Township library? And now, both towns wanna build a new library. So I said, "Well, we gotta build just one, right?" "Oh, no. We can't agree to..." I say, "Well, we gotta build just one, right?" "Well, no. We can't agree to that. We can't agree to that." I mean, it's crazy. We've got three different fire companies in two towns, all of whom want their own equipment. Why are we doing that together? So, this kinda stuff, if everybody wants to have their own, they have their own. But other taxpayers around the state should not be paying for it. And that's what you're doing when you're giving them state aid. So we reduce the state aid by the amount they could've saved if they had merged services. And then we'll see if we get people's attention. But I am not gonna any further allow the taxpayers all around this state to pay for the excess in a municipality because they don't either have the guts to stand up and tell their town, "Hey, we gotta do this. We gotta save our money," or they just don't care enough. If they don't care enough, then they're gonna pay for it themselves. Now, this shouldn't be that controversial a plan, right? And I told you, me and Senator Sweeney are together on this. The Senate President, the Governor, I agree to his bill. Nearly 600 days, this thing's been pending without action in the Assembly. 600 days. Why? Same thing. Whining and moaning from some mayors. "Oh, we wanna choose ourselves and we want everything. We want all our state aid and we wanna make our own decisions." Guess what? We don't have the money to do that anymore. And I am tired of hearing people moan and complain because they don't wanna make tough decisions. You wanna stand up and call yourself mayor? You wanna stand up and call yourself councilperson? You wanna stand for election? Guess what? Stand on your two feet and make the tough decisions to save money for the people who gave you the jobs in the first place. That's what I'm doing in Trenton. They need to start doing it in the towns. So, that is the very controversial plan I put forward for the fall. I mean, it seems like, on five of the things I talked about, three of them have the Senate President with me. You would think those are layups, right? That should get done like that. And by the way, I had him on the tax cut too. So that's, I'll give myself a half on that. That's three and a half out of five. So what we need to do is get on these folks. And let me tell you, one of the reasons that they gave, and you'll love this, this is from the Assembly, why they didn't give me the tax cut and give you the tax cut before the end of June, and they said this publicly, so I'm not making this up. You can go back and look at it in the paper. We don't wanna give him the tax cut because he'll go to Tampa and give a speech at the national convention saying he cut taxes. Now imagine, we are setting public policy for how much money you're gonna have in your pocket because the Democrats, some of them in this state, are so partisan that they don't wanna give me the opportunity to say in a speech in Tampa that I cut taxes. They made that decision for you. Now, you know what I did anyway, right? I went to Tampa and said I cut taxes. Because we have. Because we cut business taxes. We cut $2.3 billion in business taxes trying to help create jobs in the state. So I guess they forgot that they had voted for that. But that's literally, you have Democrats. Go back and look at it. You have Democrats saying, "We don't wanna give him the chance to say this in Tampa." I, really? We're really gonna set public policy in New Jersey by what someone might or might not say at a national political convention? I mean, listen, I, I hope you can see, I'm doing everything I can to find compromise in this state. And I've compromised on a lot of things. And we've gotten a lot of things done. Pension and benefit reform, the property tax cap, balancing budgets, you know, economic development reforms. All these things we've gotten done with Democratic votes. Because I've reached across the aisle and said, "I will work with you. I don't agree with everything you stand for, but I will work with you." Let that stop now. And they're gonna try to stop it now, everybody. Get ready. Because they care more about power than they care about you. And the reason I know that is because now, all, they're all getting ready to talk about the next election, when we elect a governor again. And let me tell you, here's one thing they've all decided. They don't like me all that much. And they'd like to see me go someplace else. Far, far away. Yeah, I don't think they're for that either. So you gotta hold their feet to the fire now. Now, you have to hold their feet to the fire. There is nothing in here, in this agenda for the fall, that doesn't make sense. All of you just sat and listened to it. All makes common sense. There's nothing radical in there. So we need to go and fight for it now. And this is what I'm gonna be focused on. That's all I'm gonna be focusing on between now and January 1st, are those items I just talked about. I'm not gonna spend time on anything else unless something gets thrust upon me by, you know, events that I can't control. What's gonna be coming out of my mouth is talking about those issues. And make them answer to me and to you as to why they won't do it. now we get to the fun part of the program. Fun part of the program is you get to ask questions and I get to answer them. There are only four... Easy now. Remain calm, sir. There are just four rules before I start taking it. He got the first rule right without even knowing it. You raise your hand, I'll call on you. And when I call on you, please let that person ask the question. And don't let me yell out questions. I will not answer yelled-out questions from the audience. Just on the ones that people raised their hands. We don't wanna keep things calm here. Secondly, once I call on you, please don't start asking your question until you get the microphone. Because this is a pretty big room. We've got lots of people here and I want everybody to hear your question. Third one is, that's a rule that is some advice. When you get this microphone in your hand, you are gonna feel an indescribable, but undeniable desire to make a speech. Take my word for it. I feel it all the time. It's gonna happen. And I'll listen to your speech for a little while. But we had lots of people here this morning. I'd like to get as many questions as I can. So, at one point, I may just say, "Okay, okay, okay. I get it. Yep. What's the question?" And it's not because I'm trying to be rude and interrupt you, but it's just that I wanna let more people ask more questions. And fourth and finally is this. There are a few people who I see here today, like the County Executive, Kathy Donovan, who I'm thrilled to have here today. She's doing a great job here in Bergen County. Folks like Kathy Donovan, we lovingly call repeat offenders. They have been to Town Hall meetings before. They know the way the drill goes. Many of you, though, are unfamiliar faces to me. So, you may, though, have heard about our Town Hall meetings on the news. You may have gone on the computer and seen some of these YouTube clips of how things go in Town Hall meetings. And you may be a little scared. Please don't be. See, I know there're gonna be people here today who disagree with me on some stuff, and that's fine. And, and if you disagree with me in a reasonable and respectful way, you'll get a reasonable and respectful disagreement in response. However, if you decide, if you decide that today is the day that you wanna show off for all these cameras back here, if you decide that today is the day that you wanna take the governor of New Jersey out for a walk, I wanna just remind you all of something. We are all from New Jersey. And that means, if you give it, you are getting it right on back. So, let's get ready. Let's get going. Okay. Who's first? Yes, ma'am. In the yellow, right there. Now, hold on now. Wait for that microphone. Don't break rule number two.
I kinda don't wanna stand up. It's a little bright in here.
Okay.
Okay, I'm more comfortable.
Sure.
I'm not really gonna ask you a question. I just, I'm from Elmwood Park. Hello, Governor. How are you?
I'm great. How are you?
I wrote you this letter back in March.
Okay.
I emailed it. I hard copied it. I don't know if you wanna copy. I never got a response from either you or your office. My family pays a lot of taxes here. We live here. We have businesses here. We're landlords here.
Okay.
It's not only personal, it's business. This is for my tenants.
Sure.
I am your new voter. I am a Republican. I'm more towards the liberal. I have a huge problem in the amount of aid our school system is getting from the state. I'm not gonna point fingers at my council, my Board of Ed, my mayor. Love you, Mayor Mola. I wanna know, you're here. You're the big guy in the state, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Can somebody help us out? Because I don't think Elmwood Park should be third on the list for state aid. We are not up there with Fairlawn and we are not Saddle Brook. So I am asking you, please, figure out what we're doing. We are either gonna get treated as Fairlawn, who's getting over half a million dollars, who demographically, jobs, I mean, the municipality, is doing better than we are, or we're gonna get treated, isn't Lodi an Abbott district? Lodi Garfield, aren't they Abbits? They get extra money? Or you're gonna please put us in Abbott and give us more aid? Because our kids deserve a lot better here. And if you want me to stay and be a good landlord and stay here, I live right around the corner. I love it here. We gotta do something for our kids because it's not right. I'm driving down the street. Kids are walking in the rain. This isn't courtesy busing. Look at me. I'm gonna be on, I'm not making it to the high school if I have to walk. According to our local paper, 40%, that's almost half of our children, are getting free lunch here. You're gonna take away our bus? You're talking about a library in these towns? Our library doesn't even have a book drive, okay?
Yep.
Our rec center, everybody's trying to figure out what's going on. This is it. This is where our kids are coming to sit and eat. We pay a lot of money to live here. I'm talking for my kids. I'm talking for our kids.
Yep.
I'm running the house right now. Wow, if I ran the house the way people have been running the state and the municipality, forget it.
Yeah.
Can we please have some more money? And there's a lot of issues that I wrote to you about.
Sure. Well, let me read the letter and I get the gist.
Our rec, our library, the school, the bus.
This is that moment where I'm gonna interrupt you because we're now deeply into speech mode.
Thank you very much.
Got it. And I get, and I get what you're talking about. And you handed AJ the letter and I will, I will read it on my way back to Trenton. Listen, I would love to be able to tell you, "Yeah, I'm gonna give you more money in Elmwood Park." Except, when I tried to change the school funding formula in my first year as Governor, to make it more fair, I had the Supreme Court overturn it. Now, here's the bottom line, everybody. Because of the way things have operated in this state, the Supreme Court, not the legislature, not the Governor, is in charge of school funding. The Supreme Court ordered me to send $500 million more to the Abbott districts. They appropriated $500 million, ordered me to send it to the Abbott districts. I had no choice but to do so. And so you understand the scope of this. 63% of all the state aid, and this year, it's $8.8 billion, that we're sending to school districts. 8.8 billion, the highest ever that any governor has sent to local school districts. 8.8 billion. 63% of it goes to 31 school districts. The other 37% goes to the remaining 557. By order of the New Jersey Supreme Court. Now, you may have read, I hope you have, that I'm trying to change the Supreme Court. I nominated a guy from Bergen County, extraordinarily qualified guy, would've been the first Asian American in the history of the court, former federal prosecutor, turned down by the Democrats in the Senate. Nominated a mayor for Morris County, who would've been the first openly gay member of the Supreme Court, African-American, graduate of Yale Law School, honors graduate of Amherst College. You know what they did? They turned him down and said he was unqualified. Unqualified. An Amherst magna cum laude graduate, a Yale Law School graduate. Unqualified. Now, they've said, if I wanna put two more people on the Supreme Court, that I have to find a Democrat or an independent to put on there because they're not gonna confirm Republicans. I mean, this is what the state senate's doing. And I, and I have to be clear, the public's not engaged in this. As hard as I've tried to get you engaged, you're not engaged in the fact that the Supreme Court controls nearly $9 billion of your spending, of your money. I'm at their, at their request, having to spend hundreds and hundreds of millions of additional dollars, not in districts like Elmwood Park that need them, which also affects your property taxes. But, I've gotta spend $30,000 per pupil per year in Asbury Park. Listen to that number. $30,000 per pupil per year in Asbury Park by order of the Supreme Court. And last year, of the kids who graduated from Asbury Park High School, less than half of them could read it at an eighth grade level. I'm spending $24,000 per pupil per year in the city of Newark, where the kids who started the ninth grade last year, 23% of them will graduate with a high school diploma in four years. Now, if money equaled quality, the Asbury Park schools will be the best in the nation. And they are not. By a long shot. Yet, the Supreme Court continues to order me to do this. Until you get engaged with me to put people on the Supreme Court who understand what their job is, which is not to make the laws, not to appropriate the money. If they wanna do that, get out of the black robes, run for office, and get elected. And get ready. I'm getting ready to nominate some new folks to the Supreme Court. And I am willing to make a prediction to you. No matter how qualified they are, no matter what party they belong to, I am willing to bet you that the Senate will stand up and come up with some excuse not to confirm one or both. I'm willing to bet you that. Because here's what it's all about. The Democrats, the last bastion of liberalism they have in the state that I can't try to control is the Supreme Court. But worse than me trying to control it, you can't control it. Because if you saw one of our Supreme Court justices in a deli here in Elmwood Park getting a sandwich on a Saturday afternoon, and you went up to him and said, "Mr. Justice, why is it that you're forcing us to spend all this money in these districts and we don't get our fair share here?" You know what he'd say? "I'm sorry, I can't discuss that with you. I'm a Supreme Court Justice." And you say, "But wait a second. You're deciding how to spend nearly $9 billions of my tax money. I should be able to ask you questions about it." "I'm sorry, I'm a Supreme Court Justice. I can't answer." They are an unanswerable branch of government. Now, that's okay if all they're doing is interpreting the laws that the legislature passes and that I sign. But when they start making the laws, when they start appropriating the money, when they're in charge of nearly $9 billion of our spending, the Supreme Court is out of control. We need to restore it back. And the only way I'm gonna help you is if we do that. Yes, ma'am. Stand up in the back. Yep.
Yvonne Garrett Moore from Newark, New Jersey. You're absolutely right, Governor, about the amount of money that's being spent in Newark. Our whole state is suffering financially because of the amount of money that's going in Newark Public Schools. I came to you two years ago, about a year and a half ago, with my son Isaac. So I'm here to say thank you. Because today, Isaac is getting a better quality education because you've made the difference. And I wanna thank you for that. He's my only son. This was after a very long struggle in trying to find out what Isaac actually needed. They would not test him. Finally, with your approval, we got the testing done. Sure enough, we found out that Isaac had some dyslexia and ADHD and he needed to be treated in a certain way. And today, he is in a school that's giving him that support. However, that school is not in Newark. It's in Fairfield, New Jersey. So he's being bused 20, 20 miles away from Newark in order to get the services. We are still spending too much money in that district and not getting enough return on our dollar. We need reform for education in the city of Newark.
You're right. You're right.
Because we have more Isaks. We have more Isaks that are not being assessed properly, that are not being treated as they should be treated. Other issue, Governor, is we need help economically in the city of Newark. We have great innovation. We have great opportunities. You have put into place Mr. Patrick Foye and Mr. David Sampson, who are over the Port Authority in New York and New Jersey. We are confident in their leadership. However, we have some fallow ground that needs to be broken up because the people in administration are not reflecting the leadership that you have placed in to bring about change, to bring about the innovation that's needed. Newark Airport is one of the greatest resources that we have in the state of New Jersey. We are not maximizing the potential of its economic capability. It can be a global competitive facility, but we are not really utilizing it to the fullest capacity. I have asked Mr. Sampson, Chairman, I have been going to the board meetings consistently, asking for public input so that we could look at how we maximize the use of Newark Airport. So I'm asking you, Governor, to please create a forum where the citizens of Newark can come together and talk about how the airport can be a global force
Sure.
in our economy once again and help to provide jobs and opportunity for Newark and the greater New Jersey area.
Listen, I think it's a really good point. And, and I will, and I will ask the Port Authority to hold a, a public hearing on those issues. I could tell you that there are some plans in the works that I think we'll be announcing probably in the next month or two, to reach some of the goals you're talking about specifically for Newark Airport. To extend and maximize its use, to allow us to have more people coming through. Newark Airport has an airport of choice. More people will be able to utilize it, especially from New York and from Manhattan, where really Newark Airport is the closest airport to them. Closer than LaGuardia, closer than JFK. And we just have to make it easier for folks to be able to access our airport. So, you'll hear some plans on that, I think, in the next month or two. But I will also talk to Chairman Sampson about holding a public hearing where people can give their input about what they think needs to be done. He has led that port. I appreciate your kind words about him. He's led that port to more transparency it's ever had before. I mean, right now, you can go on the Port Authority website and you can find, for the first time in its history, you can find out the salary of every person there. Every person. We don't want We don't want there to be any mystery and any secrets. You know, we run a big operation at the Port Authority with New York. Governor Cuomo and I have agreed with Chairman Sampson that that should be transparent, you should be able to see what folks make there. If you went on the website when you went home now, you could find out what any person, from Mr. Foye, who's the top person from New York, is the executive director, to Senator Bill Barone, who is the deputy director, and right on down to people, you know, working in any place in the Port Authority, you can find out what they make per year, Port Authority, police officers, all the rest. Important to continue to make that kind of transparency, to have people have faith in the fact that we're doing that. And the last thing about Newark, we have spent a significant, invested a significant amount of money through the Economic Development Authority on new businesses in Newark. You see the building for Panasonic going up. That's because the Economic Development Authority stepped in and helped to aid them. The Teachers Village Project, which is gonna be housing four teachers in Newark, is going up because of EDA involvement. And so I see the potential in Newark as well, as a business center. And we're investing in it because we believe that that will create jobs, put people to work, and create a better atmosphere in Newark as well in terms of the quality of life for folks who are there every day trying to raise families. And last, let me just say, I remember you coming to town hall meeting, I remember you bringing Isaac, and I'm, and I'm really glad to hear that Isaac is doing well. You should not have had to come to a town hall meeting and get a governor to intervene with a Commissioner of Education to get your son the testing he needs in the city of Newark to discover that he is dyslexic and that he does need to be taught differently to maximize his potential. And that's the biggest problem. It's great that I was able to fix it for Isaac and for you, but I worry, as you said, about all the other Isaacs that are sitting in the Newark school system today, whose parents didn't come to a town hall meeting or can't come to a town hall meeting because they're working three jobs to keep a roof over their head, can't come here to see me, and I can't fix it for them. Newark has to fix it for Newark. And, and that's what we need to get to, and that's why I want the reforms that we're talking about. So thank you for bringing it up, I appreciate it. Yes, here you go, right here. Yeah, you, you had your hand raised, right? Go to one of the students.
Hi, Mr. Christie. I'm Diana Sambevsky, president of Elmwood Park Memorial Middle School. And in the past year, we've had several budget cuts of all our curriculum activities, all the sports, busing also. And we pay so much taxes that I don't think it's fair. So what can the state government do to help us regain all the...
The services, right?
Services that we deserve after paying all this money.
Well, I know that, and I usually have these statistics up here with me, but I don't have them today. I know we increased aid over last year to Elmwood Park. I don't know how much. Usually that's with me up here, but it's not with me up here today. But I know we increased aid. So it's interesting to me that services continue to be cut even though we increased state aid. So I'm gonna look into that and see why that is, because we, we gave more aid this year than we gave last year. So it shouldn't be that. But as I was saying to the woman who asked the question behind you, we still don't give nearly enough to this town and to other similarly situated towns because we're giving so much to thirty-one districts that really are not spending the money in a way that's helping make kids progress and do better. And so I'm frustrated about the fact that some of these things were cut for you and for your fellow students because you need those to try to make sure that you get the full benefit of your education. So I'm gonna look into why some things were cut when we actually increased state aid this past year. But the bigger problem is what I said before, which is that if we don't deal with the Supreme Court and allow us to give a much more fair funding to schools, you're gonna have this problem in Elmwood Park and five hundred and fifty-six other towns all across New Jersey for a long time. So hopefully while you're still in school here, I can get it fixed. Got our fingers crossed. Thanks for asking the question. Now, see, Kathy Donovan has my statistics. Thank you, Kathy. We, we increased aid in Elmwood Park this year by over three hundred thousand dollars. So three hundred thousand dollars more in state aid to Elmwood Park this year than last year. And so it's, it's a mystery to me why they would be cutting things when we gave them three hundred thousand more in aid. But we'll look into it. And what I need you to do is, A.J., you're gonna give her your card, send your contact information to A.J., send them an email, and then I, we will answer you back as to why the things happened that they did. Because you're president of the middle school, you said, right? If you're president of the middle school, you gotta, you gotta answer to your constituents. So we're gonna give you, we're gonna give you the ability to answer to your constituents, okay? So send an email to A.J. and then we'll send you the information back. Yes, sir, right there. Nope, you.
Thank you, Governor. I would like to know what can be done to rein in these boards of education statewide. They seem to be accountable to no one. I have lived most of my adult life in two, two adjacent towns. My kids went to high school in a town next to where I'm currently living. A couple of school board elections ago, I went to a candidates' night. And I asked the candidates if they were considering sending our kids to the school in the adjacent town, which is state of the art, rather than this hundred and some odd year old school building that they keep pumping money into. And one of the answers I got was, "Well, you know, if we merged, everybody from the, on the football team wouldn't be from our town." Guess what? He got re-elected. And now we're at a point where we have AstroTurf, lights on till ten, eleven o'clock at, at night. I'm not even sure how many of the people are residents of the town. But when I moved into the area many years ago, they didn't graduate a hundred kids. Today, they graduate seventy some odd kids. And they just keep building the bureaucracy and they seem to be accountable to no one.
Well, few things. First is that the, the property tax cap applies to them as well. Applies to school boards as well as it applies to, to municipalities and to counties. And so we are trying to control their spending that way. The bills that I talked about would get at exactly what you're talking about, which is to start to force the sharing of services or the merging of these different school districts. Now, you know, we have five hundred and sixty-six municipalities, but we have, I think, now five hundred and eighty-eight school districts. So we have more school districts than we have towns. And so we need to do that. But we've tried through other ways to encourage people to do it and they just said no. So now I think we have to start penalizing people for not doing it. And so that's why that shared services bill I talked about is so important. Because people are gonna start getting their state aid reduced. And that's not just state aid to municipalities, that's state aid to school districts. You're gonna start getting your state aid reduced, all of a sudden the people in your town are gonna start to say, "Well, wait a second. Why are we doing this? Because it's gonna cost you more." So that's the way we're trying to do it. And, you know, there is home rule here in this state, though. So I can't, from Trenton, nor do I think I'd get the votes, to just start saying, "You merge with this one, you merge with that one." And I don't think it's the right thing to do anyway. Because what the hell would I know about who should be merging with who in Bergen County from down in Trenton? And my guess is that if I started to do that, I'd screw it up. And so I don't want to do that. You have to make these calls. But what we're trying to do in Trenton is give you the authority and the power to make these calls. Same way if your town wants to exceed or your school district wants to exceed the two percent cap, they have to put it to a vote. And you have to vote for it. That never happened before. And you know why most people are complying with the cap now? Because they don't want to ask you for more money. Because they know what the answer is probably gonna be. So these are the things we're trying to do to control things. They're not gonna fix it overnight. But give me these other tools and we're gonna start to see more and more people now considering sharing services and merging. Because if they don't, they're gonna start to lose their state aid in bigger and bigger numbers. And that's gonna be a problem for the municipalities. So thanks for raising the issue. I agree with you. It's amazing to me, you know, when I fly to different places throughout the state, you get a different perspective on New Jersey from, you know, a thousand feet up. And it's amazing to me how many AstroTurf football fields we have now with lights around the state. And I know that, 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 you know, there are folks in every one of those towns who are paying higher property taxes to do that. They just did it in Asbury Park. That place where we're getting, we're paying mostly state aid, thirty thousand dollars a year, it's got a new football field in Asbury Park. I mean, listen, I like football as much as the next guy. But, you know, when we're struggling, when families are struggling to make ends meet, it makes you start to wonder about where our priorities are. And so... Yes, sir, you had your hand up first.
My name is Imam Alfred Mohammed. And I'm very, I want to congratulate you on lowering the taxes and I support you one hundred percent. One of the things I want to bring to your attention, and I know you're a former U.S. Attorney, is the frivolous use of the court system by urban terrorists. Namely, a case that was in the New York Star-Ledger on a Mark Newton, I think it was May fifteenth, two thousand and eleven. I think there should be a law passed that people just can't go and abuse the court system and abuse the taxpayers with frivolous suits. Standing, sitting behind me is a gentleman and his wife, is a member of my community. And they have suffered at this urban terrorist. I'm against terrorism in any form, whether it be national crazy people tearing up mosques, desecrating places, desecrating the United States Embassy, and also people desecrating our great cities. And this is what this Mark Newton is doing. I hope you can bring this to the attention of your Attorney General and that we can pass legislation forbidding people from misabusing the process system. This man has hit seventy-five victims. So Governor, I'm calling on your good office and I'm calling on you as a great U.S. Attorney, that you will assist us in being rescued from these urban terrorists. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you for your question. Please give all the information to A.J. that you have. A.J., go back, he's got some stuff for you. Give it to A.J. and, and he'll get it to me. And I will get it to Attorney General Chiesa for him to take a look into it and make sure that someone from their office calls all of you and has a meeting with you to discuss it. Because I don't think you'll probably get all of it just from reading something. I think they need to sit down and talk with you. And, and we, we need to reform our court system in two different ways, in my opinion. First is our, our, our family law, our matrimonial law in the state needs to be changed. It's, it's not fair to folks who are in that system. It takes too long, it's too expensive. And as families are going through the difficulty of breaking up through divorce, which is a difficult thing for all of them to go through to begin with, when you lard on the expense and the feeling that they're not being heard because of some of the laws in our state, we're looking to try to reform those family laws, those matrimonial laws into next year. Second, we need to work on tort reform, which is the kind of thing that's being done here. I mean, unfortunately, this is a, this is a place where the Democratic State Senate has told me that they have no interest. You know, the, the chairman of the Senate Judiciary Committee, where that bill would have to go through, is a guy named Nick Scutari. And, and he's a trial lawyer. Yeah, he's your senator. Well, go call Nick Scutari, ask him about tort reform. He'll probably hang up because, you know, he don't like to talk about tort reform. And told me flat out when I first became governor, "I know you can't pay the tort reform, forget it. It's never happening, not going through my committee." But it makes us, makes our, lessens our quality of life not to have it. And it makes us less competitive economically. Look at what's happened in Texas when they went through tort reform. Business boomed down there. Companies flocked to Texas because they knew that they weren't gonna, gonna be subjected to the kind of frivolous lawsuits that you're talking about. And, and it's, you know, has an enormous effect economically. I was, I, a recent town hall meeting, I had someone speak to me afterwards who told me that they were involved in a, in a lawsuit that turned out to, that wound up being dismissed. But they had to pay fifty thousand dollars in legal fees to get it dismissed. And, and those, those folks didn't have that kind of money to do that. And had to go into debt to pay their legal fees. That's crazy in a state like ours to be larding all that kind of expense on the folks. So we're gonna continue to talk about tort reform. It's not one of those areas that I'm optimistic about because your senator doesn't want it. And if he doesn't want it, he ain't gonna put it in his committee. Well, there you go, that might not be a bad idea. Yes, ma'am, right there, yep. Yep, I got you. There you go. No, that lady, right there. You gotta put the microphone close to your mouth, though.
Now, this is for Romney.
You have to put your microphone close to your mouth.
When will, when will Romney start aggressively attack Obama and his lack of experience and his failed policies so we are not stuck with him for another four years? I personally, I personally think it's about time that Romney starts to open up his mouth. If we want to get in there, he's got to do it.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, well, first of all, thank you for your enthusiasm. For Governor Romney, you know, you know, I endorsed Governor Romney back last October and I spent a lot of time from October till now, working for him, trying to help him get the nomination, which he has, and now trying to get him elected president. But, you know, listen, fact is this. I've said this many times, candidates win and lose campaigns, not supporters. You know, I, I've endorsed him, I can, I go out and campaign for him and I can say lots of things, but in the end, you know you're not voting for me, you're voting for him. And so, or not. And in the end, I think that what you're saying is absolutely true. I think Governor Romney, you know, needs to make his case to the American people. That's his job. He's got forty-nine days left to do it. And he's gotta make his case to the American people. You don't kick out an incumbent president unless the person running against him makes the case. I've often said, you know, you don't, you don't win the championship on points. You gotta knock the champ down onto the canvas. That's the way it works, I think, in politics, the same way it works most of the time in boxing. And so from my perspective, it's up to him. He's gotta decide. Because in the end, you're voting for him, you're voting for the candidate. And you're looking for a window into who he is, what kind of president he'll be. I believe he'd be a very good president. But the fact is, I've gotten to know him a lot better than you have. And it's his job now over the next forty-nine days to make his case. Not, and I would suggest to you respectfully, not just against Barack Obama, but he's gotta make the case for Mitt Romney. And, you know, because people vote for someone most of the time, not against someone. And I think the American people are ready to fire Barack Obama. But, but... They gotta be convinced that who they're voting for is gonna be an improvement. They've gotta be convinced that if it's, if it's gonna be worse, they'd rather stay with the, you know, the one they know than the one they don't. And so he's, it's up to him. Now, I believe he can do it, he's got forty-nine days to make the case. And, you know, we've, I'm sure someone's got this on video, maybe I'll just clip this to him and send it to him. Because he should hear directly from folks like you about what he needs to be doing to win this election. Yes, ma'am, right there.
Thank you, Governors. This is my fifth town hall meeting.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you for calling on me. My name is Joan...
First time I called on you?
Yes.
All right. This is phase off.
I think stubbornness. My name is Joan Minkton, I'm from Clark, exit one thirty-five in New Jersey parlance. I have a twenty-nine-year-old daughter with autism. She will need care twenty-four seven for the rest of her life. Her position on the DDD waiting list is three thousand five hundred and seventy-two. Last year, we took fourteen people off that waiting list. At the rate we're going, not only will I be dead by the time she gets to the top of the list, but so will she. If I become incapacitated and my daughter is an emergency placement, I lose all control. I get no say in where she lives, I get no say in who she lives with, I get no say in who takes care of her. She could be placed anywhere, there's an empty bed, including one of the developmental centers that you're trying to close. What can parents do to change the situation in the state of New Jersey?
Well, thanks for raising the issue. And, um... Let me say a few things about that. First is that I'm trying to close two developmental centers, in part to take down the waiting list. Because all the money that we now currently spend on those developmental centers, which is significant, as you know, will be put to reducing the waiting list. So we're not gonna save any money for the state in closing developmental centers. I'm gonna take that entire budget from developmental centers and commit that to group housing and community placement to try to lower that waiting list significantly. And I think with that kind of money, we will be able to. I know, because Mary Pat and I have spent a lot of time on this issue, both of us personally since I've been in office. And I know that your story is the story that keeps parents up at night. There's a lot of focus on the children with autism when they're school age. And we do a lot of things for the school-aged children in New Jersey who have autism and to try to support their families. But the things that really weigh on parents, and I could see weigh on you, is what happens when you're not here anymore? Who's gonna take care of your daughter when you're not here to take care of her? And when I talk to more parents who have children with autism and other developmental disabilities, that's the thing they say to me more than anything else, is that what they worry about is not their child from two or three years old to when they age out, it's after they age out and what's going to happen and what's going to be available for them. We have to be much more aggressive about it, and that's why I think closing developmental centers, a few of them, makes sense. One, because we're the second highest state in America in terms of institutionalization of the developmentally disabled in America. Only Texas institutionalizes more folks than New Jersey. We don't need that many people institutionalized. We know, from the experts in this field, that most people do better in a community setting, in a group home setting, than they do in an institution. They're much more apt to reach their full potential in that setting. Now, there will always be some people who are so profoundly disabled that they will need a developmental center, and we'll always have developmental centers to service those folks. But we need to stop looking at the solution as institutionalizing folks, because it's not helping them, for a large number of them. And so, that's why we've developed this plan. We're going to be closing the Totoa Center, we're going to be closing the developmental center in Woodbridge. And for those folks who are in there who need institutionalization, we'll transfer them to one of the other developmental centers. But for the majority of those folks in both Totoa and in Woodbridge, they're going to wind up going into group settings that we're going to pay for through the savings that we make from closing those centers. It's not going fast enough, but it's going, going to go a lot faster after we do this than it's gone before. And we're trying also to settle the lawsuit that's involved with this as well, to try to give us more flexibility, because lots of families want to donate homes and do other things, which under the current law, they're not permitted to do. And so, we're, once we get through the lawsuit phase of this, I don't want to get too deep in the weeds, but I know you know about it, then we're going to have the flexibility to do some other things in addition to the money from developmental centers. The one thing I want you to come away from this conversation with is this, I know this issue, and, and I care deeply about it. And I know how absolutely tortured parents are as their children get older and they get older, about the prospect of that child being alone and not being cared for. And any of us who are parents, understand that the thing that we care about the most, more than our own health and safety, is the health and safety and well-being of our children. And so, just know that I am focused on this issue. There's been years of neglect of this that I'm trying to turn around. I know I'm not getting it done as fast as you would like it to get done, but I think once we take these steps, and they're controversial to close these centers with some people, but once we do, we're going to have the money to be able to lower that list significantly, so we're not only taking 14 off a year, which just is not acceptable to me, and shouldn't be acceptable to you. So, thank you for raising the issue and raising the question about your daughter. We're trying hard to do it, make it better. Yes ma'am, purple?
Hi, my name is Daisy Pangellinen. I was an Elmwood Park Memorial High School alumnus, and I was also ex-President of our high school student congress, so.
There you go.
I wanted to let the young lady over there, I just want to let you know that I'm actually approaching the Board of Education next Tuesday about another issue, so if you have anything, just please come to me after the meeting as well. Anyway, I'm also a Bachelor of Science in Healthcare at the University of Sciences of Philadelphia, and a frequent churchgoer at St. Leo's Church next door. I wanted to bring up the platform on healthcare. Do you think Obamacare is a step closer to a utopian society, or a step backward to a capitalist society? Living in the United States, we learned that everyone is accountable for ourselves, but isn't it almost the government's civic duty to account for the young adults who aren't receiving healthcare and, you know, we have a declining economy? Isn't that almost the government's responsibility? I feel like Obamacare is a step forward and a step back, but what is your stance?
I'm opposed to it. Because I believe that each state should deal with healthcare on its own. I don't believe that there can be a system from Washington DC that can deal with the healthcare challenges effectively that we have in New Jersey, given our population, its diversity, its density, and the same system deal with Wyoming, and what the challenges are in Wyoming, or North Dakota, or Montana. We're very different. This is a huge continental country. And because, if you've traveled the country, you see the enormous differences between the challenges that are faced. And when I talk to my fellow Governors, they all have different challenges that they face on healthcare in particular. The challenges that they face in the Mountain West, where they have huge expanses of land, people separated enormously by geographic distance to be able to get to and access healthcare, are much different than New Jersey, where we're the most densely populated state in America, the most diverse state in America, and the healthcare challenges we face with all of us on top of each other, and healthcare institutions, you know, seemingly, you know, dozen or more per county, is much different in terms of the challenges that we face. So I don't subscribe to Obamacare, because I believe this should be left to each state to determine. The federal government can help and can encourage, but I don't think they should be running it centrally from Washington DC. I think the more times we do that, the more trouble we get in, in terms of making those healthcare decisions happen further and further away from the doctor-patient relationship. And I think as a Governor, I know what's needed in my state a heck of a lot better than what some bureaucrat in Health and Human Services in a cubicle in Washington DC will know about how to deal with your healthcare. And I'm willing to be held accountable for that, and making those decisions. But right now, what Obamacare does is bind my hands in terms of the flexibility that I would need to make those decisions. In New Jersey, we have the second most generous Medicaid system in America, in terms of its eligibility. We have a family care program that takes care of the working poor in New Jersey. We've made those decisions as a state, to invest that money to take care of folks who are economically disadvantaged here. They make much different decisions in other states that aren't nearly as generous as ours. I don't think a one-size-fits-all, I don't think what New Jersey does should be imposed upon Louisiana, and I don't think that what Texas does should be imposed on New Jersey. If you believe that, then why is it any better to have Washington DC impose this stuff upon us, for all 50 states, pretending, pretending that somehow a Washington DC solution will be appropriate, efficient, effective, cost-effective for the entire country? And so that's why I oppose Obamacare, because I don't believe that it's going to achieve the things it claims it will achieve. I think it will be significantly more expensive than they ever claim it's going to be, and we can't afford another huge Washington DC program, given that we're sitting on $16 trillion in debt in Washington DC, and adding to that by a trillion five every year for the last four years. So, I understand, I understand that there are challenges in healthcare we need to deal with. But I think what the President should do is block grant, block grant Medicaid to the states. Let each state decide how to deal with their poor population. Because I tell you this, the needs of the poor population here in New Jersey are significantly different than a lot of other places. And let the Governor and the Legislature in this state decide how to deal with that. It's insulting to me, insulting to me, that the President of the United States thinks that somehow, if he block granted that money to me as Governor, that somehow I couldn't be trusted to take care of the citizens of my state. I'm the Governor of every citizen in this state, not just the ones who voted for me, but the citizen, the Governor of every citizen of our state. And when the President refuses to block grant it to Governors, what he is saying is, "I don't trust you to take care of your least fortunate. I have to make those decisions from Washington DC." Well, let me tell you something, I completely reject that, and I think it's insulting to the people in New Jersey to follow that kind of policy. I have been, I have been signaled by my staff that I'm on last question. Now, now to show you that I am still the pain in the neck Governor, you know, I'll take two more. Because I don't want the staff to think that they absolutely control me. So we'll take two more. We'll take one from an adult and one from a student. One from an adult, one from a student, we'll start with the student first. She's been raising her hand very patiently up here in the front row for a long time, so we'll go to the St. Leo's student.
Governor Christie, my name is Nicole Pignella, and I'm the President of St. Leo's Schools Student Council.
We are awash in Presidents today, aren't we? This is great. Fire away.
My question is, what is the status of vouchers in our state in order to help our parents pay for private education?
Yeah, let me tell you. The status is, there is one person, one person preventing our state from having a system which allows parents, regardless of their economic circumstance, to make educational choice for their children, and that's the Speaker of the Assembly, Sheila Oliver. She refuses to post this bill for the Opportunity Scholarship Act. She is the single person who is stopping this from happening. There are the votes in the Assembly to be able to pass that bill. The Senate President has told me that he would post and pass the bill. I would clearly sign it, and I think it's wrong. See, I send my kids to Catholic school. It's a choice that my wife and I have made, because we believe that faith should be a part of their education every day. But I don't, but fortunately for me, because of what I've done professionally, my wife's done professionally, we can afford to pay our property taxes, and to pay the tuition for our children to go to Catholic school. I don't think that choice should be, should be available just to me, because we can afford to do it. I think it should be available to every parent who believes, especially in school districts that are failing their children. They should have the opportunity to give their child another choice. And I think the idea that parents won't responsibly make that choice is insulting to parents. And so I believe we should start, we should start with failing school districts, school districts where they are not meeting their goals to give the children the best education possible. In those school districts, I believe parents should have the opportunity to take a voucher, go to a private school, go to a parochial school, and, and give them the chance regardless of how much money they make. This should not be something that's available just to people like me. This should be available to any parent, because, let me tell you, just because you've had some economic success in your life, doesn't make your child's life more valuable. Every parent believes their child's life is valuable, and that their potential is limitless. And so, for everybody who cares about this issue, you should write to the Speaker. And I tell you, the folk, the kids from St. Leo's, you should write to the Speaker. You should write to her and say, "Listen, we think that our parents deserve a chance to make this choice for us. You pay a lot in taxes already for a school system, you'd be taking much less out than you're putting in with the voucher program that we're proposing, and I think it's just common sense. And so I'm glad you asked the question, I am totally for it. If it got to my desk, I wouldn't let it sit there for 30 seconds before I signed it. I would sign it and put it into law and implement it as aggressively as I could, because we need to give parents in this state choice for their children. They're their children, they should be able to choose." Yes ma'am?
Governor Christie, thank you so much for being here. This is my third town hall. First time I had the courage to get up and ask a question. What do you think about a Board of Ed that can't get AstroTurf for their football field, so gets the town to bond for it? A Board of Ed that, whose superintendent cuts his salary like you requested that they do, but then has a stipend to bring it right back up? Stipend for what? And a Board of Ed whose secretary and business officer retires and puts his son in that position at more than $150,000 a year? With no other candidates, because the superintendent went on record in the paper to say he was the most, he was so qualified, we didn't have to interview anybody else? So when you give more aid to the Board of Eds, they're not spending it on the kids, they cut the kids' programs. Even when my, my kids are gone out of that school system now, they're in college, out of state I might add, because that's where they got the most scholarship from. But when, it doesn't go to the kids. They cut on their line items, they'll cut a fishing club that costs $800 a year to run, and yet they won't cut salaries, they won't cut where it really is meant to be cut. I mean, I, I can't even tell you the town I live in, because the repercussions for me to even ask you that question would be great for me. So, it's just, it's bad.
Well, let me just, let me just say this, let me just say this. I feel, as I travel around the state, and especially, you know, in the years that I've been Governor, the frustration that people feel, that you're, that you're expressing about a government that seems to think that they operate on their own, in a way that's unaccountable. It's one of the reasons why now we've given school districts the option, the towns the option of moving their school votes to November, so that more people will vote. Right now, you know, in, in the April elections that we used to have, nobody votes. You know, you get like 9, 10, 11% turnout. Now, in the fall elections, you'll have more people turning out. I don't know if that will make there be more of a focus on the school board elections and who you put there, but it's at least worth a try. When I put the superintendent cap in, you know, you find folks all the time who are now just looking for their way around it. I mean, the people in this state tell me they want certain rules in place. In the instances where I put those rules in place, you have other elected officials who are trying to find their way around it. And it just, it's very frustrating to me, as it's frustrating to you. Because then people complain about the fact that their property taxes go up, or that they're, they're not getting the services at the school that they want. But I have to tell you, what frustrates me is that these people keep getting reelected. Now, someone's reelected them, okay? Someone thinks these people are the right people to do these things. Right, and listen, I know that, that, that the majority of money, the overwhelming majority of money that's spent on, spent on school board elections is spent by the teachers' union, and that it's a cozy relationship. These school board members get campaign contributions for the teachers' union, they come back and they do things that are beneficial to the teachers' union positions, and not worried about necessarily what's best for the kids. Now, that's not every Board of Education in New Jersey, and there's lots of people who work very hard on Boards of Eds and try to do a good job. But I hear more and more of the frustrations of folks like you. I have to tell you that my ability to be able to control that in 588 school districts is limited. You know, you could just imagine, there's not enough hours in the day to try to figure all that out. At some point, the citizens of that school district have to decide that they're going to start their own movement to get these people out. And I know it's frustrating and it's difficult, but you know what? The other thing I know about an election, and I don't want to get too deep into politics here, but an election that's a 10 or 11% turnout, it's a lot easier to win that one than the one that there's 60% turnout. You have to move many fewer voters to be able to get them to agree to kick some people out, and send a message. Because here's the one thing that most people in public life care about the most, and that's getting reelected. And so, if they believe that a group of people are going to threaten their ability to be reelected, they tend to change their point of view on things. So, I understand your frustration. I hate the fact that these people go around these rules that I set. We then go back, like the property tax cap's a perfect example, you set these rules, now mayors are doing fees. So now I've got to go back and do another law, to try to close that up. And you know what? When I close that law up, there's going to be one or two ingenious mayors going to try to figure out a way around that, instead of just saying, "This is the will of the people, and I should be, and I should be implementing the will of the people," and it's not being done. So I feel your frustration, I wish I could come to you and say, "Here's the silver bullet solution, I got it fixed, no problem, I'll take care of it, I'll get back to you in a week." This is a tough issue and a tough problem, controlling Boards of Education. And until we start to consolidate them more, and, and have not so many of them, it's going to be impossible to have the type of really aggressive, effective oversight over each and every one of those decisions that you're looking for, for me to be able to provide. So, I, I, you know, I, I feel your, I feel your frustration, I feel it too, but the best we can do is to try to change this system piece by piece, which is the stuff I talked about today. Trying to change this system to take away the things that they're using to take advantage of you. You know, whether it's getting paid out for sick pay, you know, whether it's holding dual offices, whether it's holding dual public jobs, all these things create an atmosphere in the state that makes it much more expensive and much more frustrating as a citizen to live there and feel like you're really getting taken to the cleaners. So, I feel it, I'm working hard to try to change it, I think we're making progress in changing it, but let me tell you, that's why I'm in so many fights. I mean, you know, and I'll end with this, and thank you for your question, that's, that's why I'm in so many fights. I don't get, I don't get in all these arguments and fights across the state, because like, I just like to argue and fight. But, but the fact is, that, and this is where, you know, some of the folks who write across the state have this extraordinarily Pollyanna view of how things, how things really work in government. You know, if the Governor would just be nicer, if he would just be kinder, if he just wouldn't use some of those really aggressive words, you know? I mean, I actually had a reporter write in the paper the other day that I needed psychiatric counseling, you know? I mean, you want to talk about a self-important person, who, who is, who has a newspaper column and is diagnosing people from his newspaper column, this is a, this is a special kind of ego that, that writes that kind of stuff. I fight these fights, because that's the only way you get people's attention in this business, okay? You don't get people's attention in this business by sitting in a circle, holding hands, and singing kumbaya, everybody. That's not the way we fix these problems. You fix these problems by standing up and planting your feet in the ground and saying, "This is where I stand, these are what my principles are, this is what I believe in, and I am willing to fight for it." Now, once you establish that, if the person moves closer to you, then you've got to reach your hands out and compromise sometimes, because in this life, you're never going to get everything you want. And I, believe me, I am resigned to that, I ain't getting everything I want, but I'm not going to compromise my principles either. Now, there is always a boulevard between those two items, right? Between getting everything you want and compromising your principles. Sometimes it's very narrow, sometimes it's broader, but it's always there. The job, in my view, of the Governor is to find that boulevard to compromise and get on it, and get other people to get on it with you, so you make progress for the people who voted for you. Now, you look at all the things that have happened over the last three years, all the different compromises that we've been able to forge to get things done, things people, we just reformed- We just reformed teacher tenure. It was a law that was in place for 105 years and had never been amended. Now, let me tell you something, everybody. A law that a legislature doesn't touch for 105 years, they didn't forget about it. They got paid not to reform it. And people told me, "We never get it done," and we got it done. Now, do you think I would've gotten teacher tenure reform done if right from the beginning I had said, "Jeez, you know, it would be really nice. You know, if you guys would reform tenure, I'd really appreciate it. Would you please do it? Because it's the right thing to do. So please do it for me." I mean, they laughed me the hell out of this state, right? What we had to do was raise, in the most aggressive way possible, how inequitable it is for people to be guaranteed a job for life after three years and one day on the job, regardless of whether they're doing their job or not. We had to allow ourselves to be subjected to over $20 million in attack ads from the teachers' union, which you all saw on television and on the radio and billboards. We were driving down Route 78 one day, as a family, the six of us, and my 12-year-old son, Patrick, saw this billboard with my picture on it, and it said, "Governor Christie hates children and loves millionaires." And my son looked at the billboard, and he said, "Hey Dad, I don't know who's doing that stuff for you, but you better get a better picture up there. That's not a very good picture." I said to him, "Patrick, I didn't pick the picture. Someone else was picking that really awful picture of your father." You had to subject yourself to all that. They're testing you. They say, "Well, maybe if I beat him over the head with $20 million in ads, he'll go away. Maybe if I call him every name in the book in the newspaper, he'll go away. Maybe if I send mail home with every public school student in the state telling them that the governor's not for them, he'll go away." Well, you don't fix that problem by being Mr. Nice Guy. You fix that problem by telling them, "Oh yeah? You punched me? I'm punching you right back, and let's get to it." So, when people, when people write and talk about my personality, and there's lots of talk in the newspapers and on TV about my personality, why do I act the way I do? I want you to understand something really clearly. I do the things I do because you've hired me to get a job done for you. That's why I do it. And so, you know, I love to be loved. And I talked about this in the, in my speech to the Republican Convention. You know, my mother taught me a long time ago. She said, "You know, Chris, if you have the choice between being loved and being respected, always take respect." She said, "Because..." She said, "Love, love without respect is fleeting. It will always go away." She said, "But real respect can turn into love." Now, you all know that she was talking about women, when she was talking to me about that. She was saying, she was saying, "If you're gonna date somebody, you know, get the respect first. Be respected." But the same thing applies to politics. You know, I didn't run for governor to become the prom king, okay? I'm not looking to be the most popular boy in school, all right? But what I am looking for is to make sure that you say to yourselves after I'm done with four years, "You know what? I may not agree with everything he's done, but the guy stands up and does what he says he's gonna do, and he's fighting for us the best way he can, and sometimes that makes enemies. And sometimes that makes people who attack you. And you gotta decide in public life, if that's gonna make you run away, that don't get into it in the first place. It is time for those people who care about this state, not just the leaders, but all of you, to say, "The hell with this now. We're not gonna put up with this stuff anymore. We're gonna stand up and fight together to make our state more affordable, to make it a place where our seniors can afford to stay after they've raised their children, to make it a place where parents can raise their kids in the way they want to, and to make it a place where our children and grandchildren can raise their children." And those are the stakes, everybody. This isn't just about the next poll or the next election. This is about what's this place gonna look like 10, 15, 20 years from now? And that's what I'm fighting for, is to make it the place where I grew up and where you grew up, and have the chance for us to watch our grandchildren grow up here, not have to be airplane grandparents, where we have to fly in to see the Little League game or the soccer tournament, because most of the time, we won't. We'll miss those things. We'll miss the Christmas concert and the spring play. We'll miss the little birthday party around the kitchen table. See, that's what New Jersey is all about to me, is that if you live here, you can get almost any place in this state to be near your family, to enjoy those moments. And I'm not gonna let us, at least not without a fight, give that up. So, when all these folks talk about my attitude, my approach, all the rest of that stuff, you read all that garbage in the newspaper, remember something. I ain't doing this to put on a show. I am doing this because, guess what? Watch what's happened over the last three years. We've gotten results. We're finally getting things done. And here's the proof of it, and I'll end with this. In the week before I was elected, one of the universities polled, as they were doing all right during the election, and they ask you, and you know if you've been called up by one of these polling companies, they always ask you this question, "Do you believe your state's moving in the right direction, or do you think it's off on the wrong track?" Now, the week before I was elected, 19% of the people in New Jersey felt New Jersey was moving in the right direction. 19%, less than 1 in 5. New poll just came out this morning. 53% of New Jerseians now believe their state's moving in the right direction. Let me assure you something, that's not about me, because you know, my poll numbers go up and down based upon what comes out of my mouth, which all of you know is variable at times. This is about you. This is about how you feel about each other and the place you live. That's much more important than how you feel about me. It's what have we done together over the last three years to take that number from 19% to 53%, while the country, while the same people believe that our country's in the 30s? Well, it's because we're getting things done here. We're not like Washington DC, where all they do is yell and argue and scream at each other, and then don't get anything done. Yeah, we yell and argue and scream at each other, but in the end, we then say, "Okay, let's get down to business. Let's get things done and make it better." That's how that number gets from 19 to 53. And that's why I'm so proud of this state. We are no longer the state that's the butt of late-night talk show host jokes exclusively. We're no longer just the state of The Sopranos and The Real Housewives of New Jersey and, God forbid, the Jersey Shore. We're not, we're not just that state anymore. We're not just that state anymore. Now, we're talked about much more in the evening news and on the Sunday talk shows. And let me ask you this, with all the abuse New Jersey took, and I was in the middle of it for the eight years before I became governor, putting all those people in jail as the federal prosecutor, all those corrupt politicians behind bars. If I had told you three years ago when I was sworn in, that New Jersey would be so respected for what we're doing across the country, that your governor would be the keynote speaker at the Republican National Convention, you would've told me I was crazy. So thanks for coming today. What we're doing together, and this is my 94th town hall meeting, 94th town hall meeting since I've been governor, and I'm gonna keep doing them for every day that I'm lucky enough to be governor, because I hear from you then. You heard all the different questions that were raised, all the different issues that were raised, the problems, people who are happy, people who are frustrated, people who are angry. I need to hear that directly from all of you. And so that's why I keep doing it. And I can't thank you enough for taking time out of the middle of your day on a Tuesday to come here and participate and help me hear from all of you. And the one thing I will guarantee you is that the greatest honor and privilege I'll ever have in my life is to have been elected the governor of the state where I was born and raised. And so thank you for giving me that honor, and I'll see you again soon. Thank you all very much.